And now we will, if the mayor comes to be seated, we will begin this meeting for agenda items only. If you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Dotson.
Present.
Thank you. President Sharon Counsel Harris.
Present.
Vice President Lauren Johnson.
Present.
Counsel person Talia Jones Waters.
Present.
Counselor Carlett Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Nicole Bead. Counselor Toya Monroe.
Present.
And Counselor Leanna Rokeil.
Here.
Representative from Mark Munch's office.
Present.
Thank you. Finance Director Mr. Nafis Nichols. Yolanda Hughes Tax Collector. And a representative from the Engineers Office, Mr. Joe Facuso. Madam President, we have three members, four members who are absent, the rest are all present accounted for.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Citizens Forum for Agenda Items Only, comments are limited to three minutes. Andre Sims.
Mr. Sims, before you start, I just want to say, apologize to the audience for the delay. It's been over an hour, and you didn't deserve that, so I do want to express my apologies.
Counselor Yarlebord.
You should have did it. You should have did it.
You should apologize.
Should have been you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate the time of the council. I've come here to discuss the issue of the way we're investing in police right now. Our taxpayer dollars are going towards police and going towards building a new juvenile detention facility when young people don't have the resources that they need to thrive. But we want to spend millions of dollars, invest millions into locking them up while we're investing peanuts in their education. And so I come here to invite everybody to a town hall that we're hosting, January 12th. You're going to hear from young people who've been directly impacted by facilities like Yalama, Glenn Mills, and we're calling the community out, we're calling out our leaders to come together to talk about solutions and to build together because our youth deserve that, our youth deserve better. And so I will also ask the council, who can I speak to directly to help get support with programming for young people? Because while we're talking about a facility that's not going to be built until 2025, our young people are suffering. And so I work with us, a bunch of organizations that do different programming. I'm Executive Director of Day One, Not Day Two. We do different types of programming aimed at social justice. We pay artists to create socially responsible music as a way to heal trauma and combat. And so I'm not going to go through the list of what we offer, but what I do want to do is figure out who I could talk to to connect the community with the resources that they need.
I have, I have, thank you, Sims.
He can, he can. Let me get your information.
The mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have his information.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, sir. Colleen Kennedy.
Yes.
Yeah, I have your information, Mr. Dotson.
I didn't really write down what I wanted to say, and I don't even really know where to start. But I'm just going to list off a few things until my time runs out.
Voice phone?
Oh, sorry. Is that better? I'm sorry about that. So first off, I just want to note that this entire day has been spent by residents and by activists and organizers and advocates trying to figure out if this meeting was going to happen. And as the hour-plus time that we were late, that was a reasonable worry. And this is not the first time that it's happened. It's really concerning. And every time that you break the trust of the public as to what is going on and how they can best be involved, you're then limiting how much those residents are going to continue to be involved, and that is wrong. That's actually an act of political violence that you all are committing, so I think a lot of self-reflection needs to happen. The second thing that I want to name, which everyone behind me just witnessed, but maybe the whole rest of the room isn't aware of, is that Council President, Council Harris came out and told us that she had no involvement in the selection process for finalists for 4C for the police chief. And then in Executive Section, the opposite was said. This definitely tracks with what I recently learned, which is that the town hall that Council President Harris, Council Harris organized, she claimed that she was in consultation with Senator Williams and Representative McClinton. There's no such evidence of that as my Right to Know requests have uncovered. And all these different lies and microaggressions about really, really important consequential issues break the trust of everybody in this room. And yet, at these meetings, some of the elected officials demand respect for that. And I just think that that's really disgusting, honestly. We are in the middle of a holiday season. That stinks for everybody who's up here that we have to have a meeting during the holiday season. It's their holiday season, too, and it's about their tax dollars, it's about the future of policing in the community, it's about a community that has suffered through numerous deaths. And so I really think that other than maybe the FOP contract, the rest of this should be tabled for a future meeting. And you should release the contents for the public to review, too. You've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on an efficiency study, and you're going to just vote on it, maybe tonight, maybe at a different meeting, but you're not going to let the public have a chance to review it before you accept the contents of it. You're going to narrow things down to three, potentially three applicants that you all just got a chance to interview tonight, and we have no clarity about who was involved in narrowing down those people. I've checked with Right to Know experts, and you're going to have to turn over to me the list of all of the names that were under consideration, so good luck with that.
Did we sign a form saying that whatever happened in Executive was the study?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Leanna Rokeil, I want to thank you for your apology tonight, that was very much appreciated. And I think it came from several members, not just from yourself. One of the things that I wanted to mention here is that there is still concern with regards to expenses. I know that we're not looking with regards to the budget right now for 2023, but I still think that you need to take further look with regards to that and potentially modify some of those expenses, like legal, engineering, some of those areas. One of the things that we had on the table tonight that's not listed on the agenda is additional AP items. There's an additional $6,000 for the Valori Group. I am not quite certain what that is for, because at the last meeting, we were told that we were paying for the last $6,000 and the last $12,000 and some odd dollars that was owed to the Valori Group. So not certain why there's additional money being paid to the Valori Group. Other things with regards to the actually Agenda Item tonight, well, one of the things, one of the other people had spoken about is breaking of the trust. One of the things that's on selection is consideration of accepting a recommendation of the Valori Group for hiring of a police chief for Yade. And at one point in time, we were told that there were going to be residents that were also participating with regards to that particular selection. My understanding is that there were some, but questions with regards to how did you determine which residents there were? Because I know that there were several residents that had actually reached out, because it is, it's very important with regards to going on for this community, so how did that occur? Will we ever find out which residents were actually involved? Well, if we're not, why is it so secretive? And why were the ones that had suggested that they were interested not been informed that they were not going to be involved? The other thing is, there's a couple of things listed on here. It says, "Consideration of accepting the efficiency study as performed by the Valori Group." Not certain what that means. Does that mean that you're going to take the entire study and whatever they said, we're going to implement everything that they've said? Or are we actually going to take a look and see, you know, what pieces of it we agree? So wanted to get more information with regards to that meant. And then 4C actually says, "Consideration of accepting the recommendation of the Valori Group for hiring of a police chief." What does that mean? Does that mean with regards to the three actual candidates that we were interviewing? Or does that mean that they had come to a conclusion of who should be hired? So would like to get further information with regards to what that actually means. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me, do appreciate it.
Mr. Green?
Counselor Brooks, while Mr. Green comes up, we were asked not to divulge the names of the individuals, and I don't believe that anyone has done that.
Counselor Yarlebord.
That's what our NDA said. It was the names of the individuals who were not selected.
You can't.
Right. I'm just saying, but that's not any information that was shared.
Good evening, ladies.
Good evening, Mr. Green. How are you?
My beef is still the camera and the gas station. Now, I'm telling you, the people are going through there, and I'm not lying. I go over there, I stay, they come through there. We need the camera up there. Number two, we need the signs where they light up. Cypress and Long Acres, there's a sign there saying 25 speed limit. I put my light on it, doesn't shine. That needs to be taken care of. The other thing is, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Harris, I am sick and tired of the officers. Now, when I ask them to come out in the morning to patrol, to watch out for our more futures, they don't come out. When I go out to broadcast about these meetings, yesterday they came to my house. That's my birthday. I'm out there telling everybody, "Come to the meetings." This is what I do. I go to my back, "Do you know which way they come? They come through the driveway, they come through the front." How dare them do that to me? And all I'm doing is trying to broadcast, and I say, "I'm trying to help y'all out." Yes, I cuss them out, and that dear detective, Mr. Heavisay Guy, he's a disgrace, because he took my sign that I had when I had the sign in there. He come there, I didn't know who he was. I'm saying, "What are you doing? This don't belong here." I say, "I'll get that. Where's the cop? Oh, I'm the cop." What I'm getting at, when, yes, three guys came. Cowen cops came, he came, and Yaden cops came around 11 o'clock, and like I told him, I cussed him out, I told him everything. This is freedom of speech. Now, I would like, I left both of y'all notes, I would like to sit down with the four of us, me and the chief, and I want to know what my, now, Mr. Tony told me, as long as I'm not cussing and I'm not early and late, I can use the bullhorn. Now, I gave it from the other chief, tell me I can't use it. But yet, when we were out here doing the dispensary, we had the bullhorn, ain't nobody saying nothing about that, but they're trying to shut Mr. Green up, because I'm a son in everybody now, because I'm going to speak up. I love this community, and it's got to go back to the way it is. So I passed it, I had more, I don't want to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Diamond Gibbs? Diamond Gibbs?
I won't take much time, just because I do support and back everything that Andre and Colleen previously stated. So I do just want to bring an option to the floor and see if I can actually discuss this further with anyone. So I know this has been mentioned in previous meetings about money and budgeting and expenses, and how it's actually been difficult to incorporate, like, you know, decent or livable wages for police officers, and just how the hiring process has been difficult and even competitive because of what can actually be afforded to pay officers and even a police chief. So I do have questions about how the budget will play out with the police chief coming in, and if that will shift any, like, cost of living wages for officers. And I also want to ask about possible policing alternatives, because I'm seeing, again, that constantly we're discussing police officers being needed, a police chief being needed, and we're not really looking at the big picture here. Because I do remember from a previous meeting that data was listed about the crime rates over the past couple of years in Yaden, and how it's been so low. So the investment of, you know, policing and continuing to spend thousands and possibly millions into trying to find officers and a chief, I just want to see if actual policing alternatives would be an option to not only enhance community safety, but just the priority of residents as well.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear more.
You want to respond? She's not going to respond. So she's not going to respond.
Oh, I see. She also doesn't answer my phone calls either, so that's why I'm asking council as a whole. So what I could do, I could send possibly an ordinance draft, or just a list of ideas for community policing alternatives, just to put just some ideas on the table, because it doesn't hurt to start somewhere. But just in the meantime, because again, I'm pretty sure no one knows how long the hiring process will take, or if that will be successful within the next year, so something does, like, need to come about. So I am very open to having that conversation and at least throwing some ideas out there. Thank you.
Elizabeth Lekanavich. I don't understand how you read, I write L I Z, and she reads E L I C A B E T H. Interesting.
Agenda Item 4C, "Consideration of accepting the recommendation of the Valori Group for the hiring of a police chief for the Yaden Police Department." This item lacks the necessary information to comply with the Sunshine Act. The results of this vote will be illegal. You cannot vote to hire a police chief without including the candidate's name on the agenda. Residents have not been given 24 hours notice of this name. This item must be struck from the agenda. The Valori Group was not hired to select a police chief. In Lou Valori's own words, which were recorded in the September 6th workshop meeting, 33 minutes, 37 seconds, "We will assist in regards to the search." Then obviously, it's going to be up to, you know, your organization as to who you will eventually pick, but we're going to assist in that process. Lou Valori is not an elected official of Yaden, he was not hired to select a new police chief, he was hired to assist council. He was hired to assist all seven counselors. At the April 21st legislative meeting, there was a motion for council to advertise and request proposals for a consultant for the recruitment of a police chief. This passed 4 to 3. There was a motion for council to approve, appoint members to the police chief search committee. This passed 4 to 3. Sharon said, "As with the other legislative committees that are appointed by the council, if there are any persons from the public, from the audience, that would like to serve, we will probably limit that interest to one, to two people from the community, and we'll take your information and follow up at the close of this meeting. The president will run the committee, there will be a committee of five, there will be a committee of five council members for this selection committee. All of council, of course, can participate. When we made the selection for the former chief, all seven council members, we had hearings in these chambers to interview and go over the resumes and recommendations that were given us. The important thing about a search firm is they have a wide range of experience in assisting other municipalities throughout the Commonwealth to select the best qualified. They go through a number of other types of activities with regards to psychological training and other things. That type of agency is recommended in best practices. At the May 2nd workshop meeting, when Leanna Rokeil questioned whether Sharon or her solicitor had already selected a search firm, Sharon denied it. Sharon said all of council would be involved in selecting the search firm. When Latoya Monroe asked for assurance that proper protocol would be followed and there would be three bids from which to choose, Sharon claimed she was quibbling, and there might be three, or there might be five. That also did not happen. Sharon has lied to residents and fellow counselors every step of the way, aided and abetted by Talia Jones Waters, Lauren Johnson, and Carlett Brooks. And now we're hearing, as you recall, I was the only audience member who volunteered to be part of that, the resident search committee. And I am still waiting for contact as to when these meetings will convene. Now that the Valori Group has compiled a list of candidates, it's time for that search committee to convene, and I am waiting for notification. You know where I live. Two doors down.
I really don't have that much to say this evening, because I agree with everything that I've heard so far. But the one thing that I would like to ask, why are we asked to only do three minutes on the agenda? We ask questions. This is supposed to be an involvement. Sharon and everybody else, that's supposed to know answers, other than Rokeil and Monroe, who sometimes answer when they can. There's no answering. That's disrespectful. There's no need for us to even comment, because you don't listen and you don't hear.
Hire more, hire more.
Ms. Claire, Ms. Claire, Ms. Claire. Most of the questions that's being asked, I don't know.
I know, I know you don't. I understand that, Carlett.
I'm not making no excuse either.
You don't come to meetings, you don't read emails.
You know, I'm not going to, you know, this.
Just speak to me, as I'm on the floor.
I will answer your emails, but the way you act, perform, I'm afraid. I don't want to argue with you. I don't want to argue with you. So you have my, you have my personal phone number. You can call me or give me your number, and I'll call you. I'm not here to argue with nobody, that's the bottom line.
Thank you, Counselor.
Carlett, I do know exactly what you're saying, that if you knew the answers, that you would. She is supposed to help you. You've been, as she says, to be the, a team player, but she's not playing fair with you.
Ms. Angela Lee.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, Ms. Rokeil and Ms. Monroe, for letting us know while we were sitting here and waiting an whole hour. We do have lives. I want to speak about the Item 4C on the Agenda under New Business. The consideration for a new police chief appears to be a unilateral decision that did not include any input from the residents, as well as three of the counselors. Empty promises were made, and the truth has not been told. In other words, a continuous pattern of lies. The process seems to have been done with a degree of shadiness due to a personal vendetta against the former chief. The 10 so-called facts that most residents really don't want to know, and legal counsel has advised against, are still being put in newsletters and on the webpage. That needs to stop. It's not fair, you're using our tax money for these websites and newsletters that are political in nature. These are funded by us, and I don't want my money spent on it. Previous newsletters need to be studied, as they are a good model that yield a wealth of relevant information at one-third the cost. Can we have phone or email notifications, so we know what's going on if we don't want to sit here till 9:00, 10:00, and 11:00 o'clock? The newsletters make some of you feel good, but it's not a good look and projects an image of pettiness and vindictiveness that I have not seen since I attended junior high. It is time to end the divisiveness, so that we can move forward, and as they say, have nice things. We need to grow up, or get out, and not the residents, and not the three counselors. Thank you.
Well, Speaker. Yes. Consideration for approval of the police contract between Delaware County Lodge 27 of the Fraternal Order of Police and the Borough of Yaden. Well, it's your pleasure.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded.
I have questions.
Any questions?
So clearly, we've had issues with interpretation of the usage of part-time officers. That's not something that was addressed in the new contract. Is there a reason?
Can I get an answer?
What, you're going to blow it? And you're going to have to change the way you use part-time officers?
So another question would be, are you aware that approval of this contract would boost the salary of some officers by $30,000?
What? What? No.
Cut the fat. What? Cut the fat. Cut the fat out of the budget.
She's not letting the all of the.
Am I going to sit up here and lie? I know I'm being recorded. This is.
It ain't about the numbers.
Is there, are you going to provide any counselors that you expect to vote on this contract with a copy of the new proposed contract?
Counselor, you have had ample time to ask your questions to Mr. Nafis Nichols and Mr. Dotson, who has participated in this process of reviewing and negotiating the contract. So I don't have answers for you. I would defer you to Mr. Nichols, whom you have met with several times during this budgeting process. So to come here tonight and ask the questions when this contract has been.
This is the first time that I've heard anything about the police contract. I didn't know negotiations were done.
Counselor, that's your responsibility, Counselor.
The only email I received about the police contract was tonight's Agenda to vote to approve it.
Counselor, you're responsible, you are responsible to know what is going on.
I'm responsible to know when you're negotiating, when you're negotiating, and when the negotiations are done?
Counselor.
Counselor Brooks, did you know negotiations were happening and completed, and what they entail?
Well, you asked a question, and I've directed you an answer, and it's not.
Counselor Rokeil, did you know when negotiations were completed, or when they were, or what was proposed, the changes were? What the proposed changes were?
I've answered, Counselor, we're moving on.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay, Counselor Rokeil is recognized.
So as Counselor Monroe indicated, we just received a copy of this FOP agreement on 12/28/22, and to be quite honest, it's not enough time to really review this contract. But I'm glad Counselor Monroe did have some time to find out about those two significant things. My question is, who was involved in, in these negotiations? I'm sure it wasn't just Mr. Nichols.
Mr. Nichols, Mr. Dotson, Mr. Boggs, they were involved.
Well, then, if Mr. Nichols is not here to answer the question, we have Mr. Boggs here, who was part, who participated in the negotiations also, Borough Manager, Mr. Dotson. So why can't they provide us with an answer to Counselor Monroe's question with respect to the $30,000 hike in salary? And what was the other question? And why wasn't the part-timer issue clarified or addressed? That's a big one. That's a big one, especially, especially since it was such a big deal that caused someone to unfortunately lose their job. So that should be answered. Why wasn't the part-time situation addressed in the contract?
Mr. Boggs, for the benefit of the audience, would you, are you able to give clarification to the?
So there was really only two main things that were negotiated this time around. It's a very, very short amended contract, updated contract, however you want to say it. It addressed the cost of living increase, which over the next year is 4%, the following is 4%, and then the third year is 3.5%. The only other term negotiated. The only other term negotiated was a 10% cap on the pension contribution over the next three years. I don't, I respectfully, I don't know where, the math that Counselor Monroe did about two officers making $30,000 more on a 3%.
Just one, not two. Just one.
Just, just one, on a, on a 4% raise. I mean, 4, if $30,000 is 4%, it's almost, it's millions of dollars. So I don't, I don't know where that, because the only things in the contract are those two things. The, the, the part-time issue, and I mean, it's.
Mr. Nichols addressed the part-time, and he stated that they would receive, the question was that the pay was too low, so he suggested a couple more dollars, making it about, I think, 20. Excuse me.
250, I'm thinking.
Yeah, so it'd have been about $22 an hour, and we had to have more discussion. But more importantly, in the contract, it was a, one, it was a, the COLA, which is the adjustment for retirees, which are only two, adds about 104K or $1,000 to the pension plan over the contract, and the contract cost is $379,000 over a three-year period. The good news is that we have labor, great labor relations, we have labor peace, that we saved over $100,000 with the Public Works contract. So as a borough and the administration, we're doing quite well. Four and a half percent, just think about it, four and a half percent, and then we negotiated 3.5% in the third year. We don't know where we're going to be three years from now, so we're holding steady. We have contracts that are stable. We have employees who are satisfied.
Mr. Dodson.
How? We down half our police department, and they keep leaving.
Just a moment.
So, so I'm not finished with my question. I'm not finished with my question.
Excuse me, Counselor.
I'm not finished with my question.
Excuse me, Counselor.
So you want to interrupt my question?
Excuse me, Counselor, yes.
You want to interrupt my line of questions?
Yes, I'm interrupting your question, yes, Counselor.
Oh, have your way.
Thank you, Counselor.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Dodson.
Yes, ma'am.
For the benefit of the audience.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please give a historical perspective to the contract with the police department and the, and the Fraternal Order of Police? This is not a contract that just got established this year. This contract has been historically years ago negotiated, and it comes every year to be renegotiated.
No, it's a, it's a three-year contract. It doesn't, it's not renegotiated. You're giving wrong information.
Excuse me, Counselor.
It's not renegotiated every year.
Counselor, Counselor.
It is not renegotiated every year.
Every budget year, we have to look at the cost of living increases, and if it is every three year or once a year, what we've done, what Mr. Dodson, Mr. Boggs, and the Finance Director has done, you have access to that information. So when you, the question is, why do you come to the council on the night that you have to approve this contract?
Yes.
Before the 31st of the year, which is required by law? Why do you bring the questions that you could have attained answers for before coming here?
I can answer that for you.
Is that, is that just to?
It's because I received the email on the 28th with the information. This is the only chance that I get to ask this question.
You've missed six council meetings.
This is the only chance that I get to answer this question, to ask these questions, and I have not missed six.
Upon opportunity.
I have not missed six.
Counselor, you have had opportunity.
I have not had the opportunity.
Upon opportunity to get your.
Please do not purport to these people that I don't do my job. I do my job, your job, as well as many others.
So, my, my question, I wasn't finished with my question. That's my response to your question.
So I do have a correction. We received this email on December 27th, Tuesday, December 27th, so that was actually yesterday. Again, we still did not have ample time to review the contract, and to be quite honest, it's only like two pages, which is ridiculous to me. So I do have a lot of questions with respect to this contract, because like everything else, I was not included. I was not offered the opportunity to sit down and voice any concerns with the current contract that I would like to see changed in the new contract. I'm thinking about buyback days, the part-timers, the pensions, the cost of living, all of these things I would have loved to have been involved in, and I wasn't, and I was not given that opportunity. So when you ask, why do you come on the eve of the meeting and ask these questions? Because we were not told that these negotiations were taking place, and this is the date and time, please come to participate. That's why.
So you've been on this council a year, you've been on this council all year.
Let's take the vote. Let's take the vote.
You have had opportunities to ask your questions.
No one has the opportunity to ask questions, and no one has the opportunity to receive answers. That is not correct.
You know about everything else, you can know about this.
Really, we just went through all of this with Mr. Nichols here, didn't we? We just went through all of this.
Okay, well, ask, then ask Mr. Nichols. Ask Mr. Nichols about the, about officers who.
We were supposed to have a vote on this.
And get 10% of that $300,000.
Sending a false narrative.
No, we didn't go through the contract, but I'm sure you've been through the contract. I'm sure you.
And you were with the contract.
He sat right here with us. He sat right here with us.
The audience don't know anything about this contract.
Motion on the floor.
They don't know about the details. All that was said is that we have to pass a contract by a certain date. That's what was said. It was never said that we're going to sit down and negotiate, please participate. This is the day, and this is the time. We were never given a date and time to participate.
He sat right here and went through the whole thing.
You're lying.
There's a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor. The motion has been made, and it has been seconded. Madam President, would you please ask, would you please ask for the vote?
Show a hand. Take a roll call. Take a roll call. I would love to hear the roll call vote.
What is your?
No, no.
One, two, three.
Oh, it's, the hands are raised. Those that, those that are polled indicate by raising your hand or voice. Counselor Monroe says no.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Road Cloud, what is your pleasure?
No.
Thank you.
Forward to the motion carries.
Of course.
Consideration of accepting the efficiency study.
Yes, we do.
And I'm, and I'm, excuse me. Excuse me. Mr. Boggs, would you give some ramification to the consideration for accepting the efficiency study that was voted on four months ago to authorize the Valori Group to perform this efficiency study? Would you give some clarification as to what this vote entails?
As I somewhat said before, it's, it's somewhat, it's somewhat symbolic in the sense that, you know, the report, when it's published to the, to the public, it speaks for itself, it is what it is. But you certainly, as a, as a body, can, you know, put your stamp of approval on it. It's been four months' worth of work. So the vote is, is simply to, to, you know, vouch for that, but the, the true moment that is, is when, you know, this is made, made to the public, and the public can, can read the report, and, and, you know, I think obviously, you know, their, their opinion, each reader's opinion of it is going to be their own. But, you know, certainly us speaking as, as more, you know, fractured, but as a body, accepting the work that's been done is, is certainly reasonable.
Mr. Boggs, have you disseminated a copy of this efficiency study to this council?
I have only read Chapter 7, which relates to the prison cell procedure, and I forwarded that to our council. I have not seen another word.
To who? To who?
Bob D. Dominicus, who's our counsel.
Oh, to our counsel.
Our counsel.
Counsel, legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
Thank you. So my, my question was, have you disseminated it to members of this council?
No, I, no, no.
So voting to accept an efficiency study that we've never seen is something.
I have never seen the efficiency study.
You haven't seen it?
I, I've, I've seen one chapter.
You've seen one chapter, but you, you didn't send it to me, is what I'm saying.
I did not. I sent it to.
Did you send it to Counselor Road Cloud or any other councilors?
I only sent it to our local council.
Who sent it to you?
Mr. Valori.
Mr. Valori sent it to our general counsel, who read one chapter, and no other counsel, well, I didn't receive it.
Only, only one chapter was sent to me.
Okay.
And that was only because there was the, the two lawsuits that go directly to, to that chapter.
How many chapters was, were there in total?
I have no idea.
But you just got Chapter 7?
Because.
Our lawyer hasn't seen it. We haven't received it, and we are supposed to vote on it.
How many chapters are there? How many chapters are there?
I don't know. I know it's several hundred pages.
Bottom line is, we didn't receive it. Did you get a copy, Counselor Johnson?
The motion.
No, I didn't.
The motion.
Counselor Johnson didn't get a copy of it. Did you get a copy, Counselor Brooks? Counselor Brooks, do you receive a copy of this study?
Consideration to table the, um, the efficiency study.
Counselor, the efficiency study, the efficiency study, excuse me, the efficiency study is complete.
Motion to table. Motion to table the. I second the motion. The study, motion to table. I second the motion to table. Can we take a vote on the motion to table? There's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor.
The efficiency study.
Point of order, motion on the floor. There is a motion on the floor.
The efficiency study is going to be.
We're in the comment phase. There's a motion. We have to vote on that motion before we do anything else.
No, we, we motion to table.
Motion to table, absolutely.
Yeah. There's a motion. Right.
She, she can, she can comment, and we can ask questions about the motion to table, but we have to vote on the motion to table.
She didn't call for the questions yet.
No, she's making a comment. She's just talking about it.
The efficiency study, at our last meeting, the council wanted to know, when will we have the study? The study was due by the 31st. The study is now complete. I was given the information today that the study is complete, and a PDF, a PDF will be sent to each counselor. Before.
Please, no talking from the audience.
Before.
So if you received notification that it was complete today, didn't we receive this agenda yesterday?
Yeah.
So how did you get the motion to?
Because.
How did the motion, how did it make it onto the agenda if you just found out today that it was complete?
Excuse me, Counselor.
Because you expected people to vote on something that they did not review. That's what you.
That's not what is being said here.
That's what you expected.
That is not what's. Counselor, Counselor.
But you said you just found out today that it was complete.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm going to make the point, and I'm going to make it once. The efficiency study is a total of 450 pages. The efficiency study was completed, it researched and investigated and surveyed all of the deficiencies in our police department with recommendations for correcting them. The efficiency study is not a phantom. It is not a myth. It has been completed. It is, excuse me.
Please, no talking from the audience.
Please.
Because I know, I know at least four haven't seen it.
The efficiency study is going to be sent to the councilors. It is done a week before it was, it was expected to be presented to us. There were, there were.
Why is it, why is it on the agenda?
Counselor, you want to split hairs about it, because you want to describe and to promote.
Please don't purport what I want to do. What I want to do, I say what I want to do.
This part.
This is dysfunction. We did not receive this. We cannot vote on it.
Counselor, Counselor, this is not a vote.
You're lying about, you said, you, you said, you said you, it was completed today. We received this agenda yesterday. That is not the truth. You stop. Stop lying to these people.
You are lying.
Okay.
And you are trying to get confusion going here.
Okay.
The, the issue, the issue, excuse me, the fact of the matter, the fact of the matter is that the efficiency study is complete.
When was it complete?
It is going to, it is going to.
When?
Forwarded to us.
Then we vote on it after it's reviewed?
And you're not voting. You are not voting.
We'll vote to accept it after we had an opportunity to read it. We'll vote after I lay my eyes on it.
Excuse me, excuse me. You have voted four months ago to authorize this study. The study is now complete. This is a symbolic gesture.
It ain't no.
That says this, that says this, that we are going to accept what has been written here. Excuse me, excuse me.
You can't accept what you haven't read.
You're splitting hairs.
Can't accept what doesn't exist.
It's true.
For all I know, it could say Yaden is just dysfunctional. That's what's in the efficiency study, and we're accepting it.
So I'm calling for the vote, I am calling for the vote to table.
So, to table.
We're just like, what? That's what, that's what. Calling for the vote to table, all in favor indicate by raising your hand.
I vote yes to table.
Raise your hand.
I vote yes to table.
What is the motion, ma'am?
The motion is to table.
Okay.
So, so, listen, the motion was put on the floor to table, the next, so you want to, the motion to table, are you in agreement with that, or are you in disagreement?
My vote is yes.
So their vote is yes, what is your?
Who's there?
Approve it. So, so indicate you're, you're not, so the vote to.
Please, please, ladies and gentlemen, you don't make it any easier. No talking from the audience, please.
We can't hear you. I'm sorry, we cannot hear what's going on.
Y'all gotta be quiet. Counsel, Counselor Jones' vote is confused.
Those in favor indicate by raising your hand. The vote to table.
I vote to table.
Raise, thank you, I got you, I have yours, thank you.
Is there anyone else voting to table?
No.
Indicating the vote.
The motion on the floor is to table, to table.
I vote to table.
So, so, so the.
We have one person who's voted.
I, Road Cloud, vote to table. We didn't.
We voted to initiate it. Now we are voting to say it's been completed, and that's it.
How you know it's been completed? How do you know it was completed? Have you seen it? You don't even have a copy of it. How can you vote that way?
The attorney has seen it.
He only saw one chapter. He saw one chapter. Go ahead.
That's what he needed.
That's what he needed to, that's what, that's how we're voting for the community.
Can we?
We're half-ass reading documents, and we're accepting it, and that's what we're doing for the community, right?
Yes, yes.
So moved.
So, those in favor.
No, no, who made the motion, ma'am?
Counsel, Counselor Jones-Waters.
No, I'm doing, I'm wanting, I'm wanting.
You know what, this is, he's on the other floor now. This is goo.
The motion is for the efficiency study. Who made the motion?
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's second? Who's second? Thank you, ma'am.
Been moved and properly second, which you indicate by raising your hand to approve the, the acceptance symbolically of the efficiency study as performed by the Valori Group.
A document no one has seen. Never.
The motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson.
No one has seen it.
No, no.
All right, can we move on to the next?
Stupid.
Whatever his decision is, we're accepting his, his professional precision.
No, you're accepting it.
Well, that's what we just did.
You're accepting it.
That's what we just did. That's what we just did.
You four accepted it.
Madam, Madam Roadcloud, what is your, what is your vote?
I said, what? No.
Okay, thank you.
You already said it passed.
And Madam, Counselor Monroe, what is your?
No.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, I will not accept something that I've never seen and that I haven't reviewed. And it is, it is absurd that you would ask us to do that. Absurd and unethical.
You're out of order. Consideration...
Absurd and unethical.
Number C, we are done. Consideration of accepting the recommendations from the Valori Group for hiring a police chief for the Yaden Police Department.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Are there any questions?
I have a ton of questions. How is it that we're going to approve something that we, there's no name on this list? How are we approving that? So what's the recommendation? So what's the recommendation? What is the recommendation? What is the recommendation?
Counselor, Counselor, as you well know, and we cannot discuss the personnel matter from the executive session, you were there. You well know that this decision is to accept the recommendations that were presented to us tonight as a council in executive session, personnel matters being private in that session.
This document says, consideration of accepting the recommendation. There is no S on it. This is a singular recommendation. This implies that there is one person.
Counselor, Counselor, you want to split hair.
Well, it's not splitting hairs.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
And that's what it is. What is the recommendation?
Hang on, I have a question, I have a question.
Is he recommending all three applicants or is he recommending one?
He's not, he's recommending, he's recommending the three applicants for us to make a decision about, Counselor.
He's recommending all three applicants?
Counselor, Counselor, you want to complicate it, that's your problem.
No, because you don't know what you're doing.
That's your problem, Counselor. No, you don't know what you're doing.
It's your problem.
Counselor, that's your, that's your mental limitation.
No, your mental limitation. You come in here with that party shirt.
Excuse me.
That's your mental limitation.
Excuse me, Madam President, can we, can we make a correction in S on recommendations?
It's a single study.
Okay.
A single recommendation.